At this time, we'll ask the clerk to call the row for a quorum, please.
Commissioner Blakemore? Commissioner Oskie?
Here.
Chairman Whitfield?
Here.
Commissioner Hart?
Here.
President.
Thank you. Commissioner Blakemore is on vacation tonight with his family, so he's not here with us tonight. So we'll move forward. We do have a quorum of the board, so we'll move forward. We do have the agenda that was sent out electronically last week and posted on our Facebook and on our website. I do have a couple of amendments to our -- excuse me, amendments to our agenda tonight. So after the resolution R-2823, we need to insert resolution R-02923. This would be a budget amendment for one item. And then, under our purchase orders, we need to add another purchase order. Purchase order number 2023-2161, and this is a purchase for the sheriff's department that they're asking for. So we'd like to add those two items. Is there any other modifications to the agenda tonight?
No, sir.
Hearing none, I'd like to move those amendments to our agenda in a form of a motion for approval of this board. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. My commissioner asks you to approve the amended agenda. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those items are accepted and approved. All right, we do have in our minutes from our June 22, 2023, meeting that was held here at 7:00. Clerk has prepared the minutes. This is in the packet. Does the board members have any questions, concerns, or modifications to the minutes from the last meeting? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion's approved, the agenda. This time, I don't think we have anything from an informational standpoint from any of our departments at this time. We'll move down to our public comments. Is there anyone here in the public that would like to come speak up to five minutes and address the board? Yes, sir. Mr. Pope? Please state your name for the record, sir.
I'm Jim Pope. And tonight, I want to discuss something with Robert Stoltz where we left off time before last about the benefits the Walker County is getting from retaining the lawyer in Forsyth County. And you said it has saved Walker County millions. And I want to get into that later, but I want to get into something specific right now. And that is the meeting that you had to bring the attorney over here from Forsyth County about a year or so ago. You remember that?
Yes.
My question, I guess, is what benefit did the Walker County taxpayers get from you bringing him over here that night?
You know, that night, Mr. Jim, I think I might have mentioned in a subsequent meeting, I think I asked you if you felt like efficiency and competency and accomplishing tasks was important. And you agreed with me, okay?
And I do now.
Excellent. And I feel as though when Mr. Gerard came up and gave a presentation to us and gave us some insight on what it would look like if the county hired a county manager, what the benefits would be. And I think he pointed that out, what the benefits would be, how the structure would work, and exactly moving forward, how it would work with regard to the governing body. And so I think that he presented that. Obviously, we did not move forward with that because this board did not feel like at that time we needed to move forward with it. So I think it gave us the insight to make a collective decision, an informed decision, which, you know, I think was a good decision. But I think that he laid the groundwork out for that so that we could make a good decision.
Okay.
Let me just interject one more thing, okay? I know that hiring outside counsel, secondary counsel, has kind of been a sticking point with you. I know you have been concerned about that.
Yes, yes.
And I think we have reiterated that we oftentimes use the Gerard Law Firm because they are specialists in municipal government, okay? I want to give you an analogy of something, okay? I'm a specialist of the skin and its contents. That's my business. That's what I'm trained in. And if you came to me and you said, "Robert, I'm concerned I may have heart disease," and I said, "Mr. Jim, let's find out," and I would do a proper physical exam on you, I would order diagnostics on you to determine that. And then, once I collect all that data and come to you and say, "Mr. Jim, I think you may have heart disease." And what I'm going to do is I'm going to refer you to a specialist, get a second opinion. That does two things. Number one, it's just good standard of care, just like using the Gerard Firm is good standards as far as avoiding litigation. One of the things that we do, very important to me, is to keep our county out of litigation because it can cost us millions of dollars. And that's why I think the Gerard Firm has been beneficial to us to help us make good decisions, giving us a second opinion to keep us out of any type of liability, litigation. I didn't mean to eat all your time up, but I just kind of had to expand on that.
Okay, so I'll have to continue on this next time. What it's like.
All right.
But there was $1,640 spent on the 90K, according to the way I read this.
Okay.
And I'm just wondering if the Walker County taxpayers got their money's worth when you bring them from -- they have to travel two hours, probably two hours over here, two hours back and so forth. But we'll continue on this the next time.
Look forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. Jim.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, come on up, Mr. Carey.
Gary Williams. The agenda for is the resolution coming up, for is the grant money for a park. Walker County applied for the grant. My question is, that property is in Rossville, the city of Rossville. Why didn't they apply for the grant? Why did Walker County apply for it?
They also applied for a grant to do another project over by the John Ross House. But the county had been working, I guess we started maybe a year and a half ago, and worked on a master plan for that 30-acre recreational park area that exists. And so we've had that master plan available to us, waiting for grant opportunities. And so when this one come up and it kind of checked all the boxes of what the grant was looking for, we carved out just a small portion of that master plan and applied for that grant just to see by chance if we could get it. We knew we had probably about a 50/50 shot of getting that. And so we were successful in getting that. So once we started into this process, then one of the next steps will be is that the city of Rossville City Council would then have to vote to convey that property to the county. So it would be just taking the area that's needed, you know, just a few acres, and convey that property. So then it would be county-owned property. When you go down Salem Road, the other side of the road of Salem is in the county. The property next door where the creek is, that is in the county. So it would be abutting the county on two sides once that property would be conveyed from the city.
Okay. So my understanding, there's not a survey of that? And in that document that y'all approved a couple of years or so ago, it said that the county would be responsible for a survey. Where does that stand?
The survey would be part of the scope of work. Once we start moving into the phases of the project, we'd have to have that survey because they're going to have to survey to convey how much to --
Which will be another additional cost to the county.
Yeah, I mean, there would be a cost for that, yes.
On resolution 25-23, down there where it says, "Therefore, be it resolved," it says, "Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment," blah, blah, blah. Okay, it says, what I'm trying to get to is, point is, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County. Then if you flip over to resolution 26-23, it says, "Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the property listed Exhibit A." So it says, "The Board of," you know, "Resolved be the Board of Commissioners." Then when you get over to the one where it talks about the grant, it's worded a little different. It says, therefore, it's R-028-23, it says, "Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, does hereby authorize the chair or designate a sign." I don't understand why that would read differently than the other resolutions. I would think that, you know, you'd be implementing it anyway, so I just wonder why that reads differently that, you know, hereby authorize the chair to do it.
No, that's a great question. It's a very good question. Reason for that is, with that, is the document for the grant, and you can see there's several tabs there. But those tabs, when we pull this back up, this would have to be signed electronically. And so the board is authorizing me that their will is to move forward with this project. So this electronic signature or any other documents that they would have to support this, or any submittals, they would have to go to support the grant that I would have to sign. The board's authorizing me to sign any documents necessary to carry out this resolution.
So all the other resolutions that's been done, that wouldn't pertain to any of the others?
Well, most of them, you know, once it's signed here, it's usually pretty well done.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But any other grants and things, you'll typically see that.
Okay.
Very good. Good question, good question. Okay, anyone else? Okay, thank you for that. We'll move forward. Under unfinished business, I did want to make note, we did have one item from last month that got tabled, and I just wanted to mention that to y'all. Let me find it on here. It was for a rezon. It was item number two in our public hearing of the six private drives for property located at Zero Gilly Lane, Chickamauga.
The variance request.
The variance request, thank you. The variance request, and Attorney Ben Bradford was here representing those folks. Since that meeting, they had requested to rescind that request. And so our legal counsel, David Gottlieb, did get confirmation, verification from their attorney that they were rescinding that request. So therefore, we didn't have to put any unfinished business on here. But I know people that looked at the minutes or had any questions, just wanted to note they rescinded that request and asked to have that removed from the agenda because they were not planning to move forward with that project. Okay. New business, resolution 2523, to appoint a member to the Lafette-Walker Library Board. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a member to the Lafette-Walker County Board, Library, or Public Library Board. Whereas, Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas, one of the duties delegated to the chairman of the board is to appoint members of all committees of the boards with the approval of the board. And whereas, OCGA 20-5-42A provides that the county board of trustees shall consist of at least one appointee from each governmental agency financially supporting the library on a regular basis. Whereas, OCGA 20-5-42B provides that the Regional Board of Library Trustees shall consist of a trustee serving on the boards, excuse me, serving of members of county boards who are appointed to the regional board by every county board for the term specified in written pursuant to the Constitution and bylaws of the library system. And whereas, a vacancy exists on the Lafette-Walker County Public Library Board due to the expiration of term of Jeff Potts. Whereas, Chairman Whitfield submitted the following appointment to serve on the Lafette-Walker County Public Library Board, Jeff Potts, for a term beginning July 1, 2023 and ending on June 30, 2026. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the appointment of Jeff Potts is approved, so resolved and adopted the 13th day of July 2023. And you'll see that this is also a recommendation from Lisa Eubanks, who's the director of the Cherokee Public Library System, basically asking to have Jeff Potts reappointed. So at this time, I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Jeff Potts back to this board for the term of July 1, 2023 and ending on June 30, 2026. So we have a second to that motion.
Second.
Have a second. My commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, Mr. Potts is reappointed. The next item we have is resolution R-26-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to declare property from the Walker County Sheriff's Office as unserviceable surplus and remove from the county's inventory. Whereas, OCGA 369-2 provides that the county governing authority shall have the control of all property belonging to the county and may by order entering its minutes direct the disposal of any real property which may lawfully be disposed of and execute goods and sufficient title thereof on behalf of the county. Whereas, the Walker County Sheriff's Office has requested that property listed on Exhibit A be deemed unserviceable surplus and further request that the property be removed from the county inventory. Therefore, be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that property listed in Exhibit A attached here too and made a part hereof be hereby declared unserviceable surplus and removed from the county, so resolved and adopted the 13th day of July. You'll see Exhibit A is a memo from Sheriff Steve Wilson and list out the surplus items that they have that they're asking to be removed from the inventory. We have a motion by the board.
Mr. President.
A motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. My commissioner asks you, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, resolution R-027-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to transfer an employee of the Lookout Mount Judicial Circuit District Attorney's Office to a state-paid, county-reimbursed employee. Whereas, the District Attorney's Office of Lookout Mount Judicial Circuit serves the four counties of Catoosa, Jatuga, Dade, and Walker, and is jointly funded by the appropriations from the state legislation, appropriations from our four counties, and federal grants. And whereas, certain employees of the District Attorney's Office are funded by the state of Georgia, with all the benefits of the state employees, including medical, dental, life insurance options. And whereas, the 1997 session of the Georgia General Assembly, OCGA 1518-20.1 allows counties to contract with the state in order to allow non-state-paid district attorney employees to be processed through the state payroll system, thereby entitling said employee to be the same employee benefits as other state employees. Therefore, be it resolved that the Walker County Board of Commissioners authorize and designates the district attorney of the Lookout Mount Judicial Circuit as the designee for the purpose of contracting with the state of Georgia, prosecuting Attorney Counsel of Georgia in compliance with the provisions of OCGA 15-18-20.1 to transfer District Attorney, Assistant District Attorney Lindsey Chapman to be a state-paid, county-reimbursed employee. Be it further resolved that the district attorney shall be responsible for transferring to the state the required funds necessary to cover the contract compensation and benefits for such designated personnel, provided such funds are available within the approved county budgets for the District Attorney's Office, so and approved, adopted the 13th day of July 2023. We have a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. My commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution carries. Okay, resolution R-028-23, a resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to accept the terms and conditions of the American Rescue Plan Act in improving neighborhood outcomes and disproportionate impacted community grant programs and for other lawful purposes. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas, Walker County applied for grant funding for the project to construct a playground, splash pad, pavilion, with restrooms and walking trails within the Rossville recreational area. And whereas, Walker County has been awarded $2,200,000 for the project from the Georgia Governor's Office of Planning and Budget. Whereas, the funding remains an offer until Walker County accepts and executes the terms and conditions of the grant agreement. Therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, to hereby authorize the chair or his designate to sign and execute the grant agreement and take the necessary steps to implement and perform the purpose of this recreational project. Be it further resolved that the board authorizes local expenditures of up to $500,000 to cover additional project expenses, so resolved and adopted the 13th day of July 2023. We have a motion of the board to approve this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, a question for you. Is there any additional American Cares money that has been earmarked in case this $2,200,000 falls short?
That would, that's a great question. That would be that last line there. That $500,000 would be our local ARPA funds that we do have on hand.
Okay.
As the matching funds or any additional expenditures for that project. The $2.2 million was an additional new award.
Okay.
Over and above what we had received before.
Okay.
So this is all new to us, and we applied for this last year and received it this year.
Okay. Will that, half a million dollars, will it be held in reserve to see how far the $2,200,000 goes? Or will it just be all collectively one pot of money?
It would be just designated money.
Okay.
That would be earmarked for this project if needed.
Okay, okay. So moving forward, kind of the tentative date where this project might begin, any thoughts on a timeframe?
We hope to be able to get, well, let me back up. There's a lot of work to be done to get ready from an engineering standpoint and plans and looking at different designs. And that, all that work is still to be done.
Okay.
None of that work has been done outside of that original concept, which is a very high level. So they've got to go in there and, you know, determine the exact grade and elevations and those type of things.
Okay.
And come up with the full scope of work that then would have to be approved back through the grant process.
Okay.
And so that's going to take a few months to do.
Okay.
But we were hoping to be able to do this entire project and have it done and completed and open by the end of fourth quarter of '24.
Okay, okay, all right. I do know I have some constituents that would kind of like to see, from an accounting standpoint, basically how that money is being spent.
Yes.
And I think that would be transparent, for one thing. I think it would just kind of show progress to the project. And so I would like to put that in the record if we could show, from an accounting standpoint, where the money's being accessed.
And that won't be any problem at all, and also that goes through our full audit process. And then, two, since this grant is over $750,000.
Yes.
That also triggers what they call a special audit within our audit. So the auditors take a deeper dive into anything over $750,000 to make sure all the guidelines and all the expenditures met the requirement within that special audit.
Thank you.
Very good. All right, any other questions? Good questions. All right, do we have a motion to approve resolution 2823 for the American Rescue Grant?
Motion to approve.
Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
Oh, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. My commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution is approved. Okay, this is where we inserted that next resolution. This is the budget amendment, resolution R-29-23, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to amend the fiscal year 2023 budget to extend funding for professional services. Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board is the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia. And whereas, OCGA 36-81-3 provides for the county to adopt a summary item for legal level of budgetary control whereby the governing authority controls county spending. And whereas, the resolution R-019-17 established the legal level of budgetary control for Walker County at the summary, summarize, objective classification level, personnel expense, operational expense, and capital outlay. And whereas, the Walker County government is in need of professional services to review the county's defined pension fund or pension plan. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, hereby amend the budget to add an additional expenditure of $5,250 in the account number 100.1110.521200.90, which is professional services, in the FY 2023 budget, so resolved and adopted the 13th day of July 2023. And again, this is an expenditure that wasn't in the budget, but what this will do is allow a third-party company that the county works with to review the county's defined pension fund and make an evaluation and some recommendations about unfreezing that program, what that would look like financially to the county. Because back in 2012, the prior administration froze the wages in that plan. And so the employees that are in that plan currently are, their calculations for their retirements being based off of what they made in 2012. Here we are 11 years later, and a lot of those people have, you know, have improved their position in the county as far as advancements into leadership and different things. And so their incomes are obviously have gone up, and then just the pay adjustments over the years. So this is something that the board has spent a lot of time working on, and also the trustee, trustees of the pension fund. And so this $5,250 would help give the board the information to determine what the next steps are. Any other board member would like to add additional comment? I know y'all have all been very involved in this. Anybody have additional comments?
I think that covers it pretty good.
Pretty well.
Okay, very good. So resolution 2923 for $5,250, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Askew to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next item that we have is the purchase order 2023-2222 in the amount of $406,518.76 to play and park structures for the Walker Rocks Playground Phase 1. This is being funded from the voter-approved 2020 Splot and Tourism Product Development Fund. And this, there's some, the cost estimate is on here as well, and also there are some drawings, that's what they call them drawing, computer renderings, I guess I should say, computer renderings from different angles of what this first phase would look at. This project would be placed at the Walker County Civic Center, back in the back by the pavilion. And this is a playground that is for all-inclusive, for children of all abilities. pavilion, and this is a playground that is for all-inclusive, for children of all abilities, for an all-inclusive playground, and that would have the National Demonstration Site Designation, which is a designation to show and to be a part of, national recognition that this is a all-inclusive playground. And so this was a project that was on our Splotch that the citizens of Walker County voted on back in 2020 to move forward with an all-inclusive playground at this facility. So this is getting this underway. The contractors tell us that probably within less than 90 days, they can have this thing fully up and operational and functioning. So at this time, I'll open up to the Board for any additional comments.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment I'd like to make at this time. In the essence of transparency, my wife works for the parent company, PlayCor, which is the parent company of Park &amp; Play, and has for quite some time at the corporate headquarters. Although nor me or my family in any way, shape, form, or fashion will receive any type of benefits from this, as a matter of fact, I think we're actually getting a discount on our equipment because they're a local business. But due to that fact and the essence of transparency, I'm going to recuse myself from this vote.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Askew. Let the record be stated that Commissioner Askew is going to recuse himself so there doesn't appear to be a conflict of interest.
Exactly right.
Any other Board members' comments or questions or thoughts on this project? All right, hearing none. Since we do have one member that has recused themselves, and so we have good record, I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll, because since Mr. Blackmore is not with us today, it does take three votes to move anything forward in our government. So since we have one Board member not present, one Board member has recused themselves, this puts myself as the chairman in a position that I must vote on this vote in order to have an official vote, because we have to have at least three commissioners to vote. And so that's why I'm going to ask the clerk to call the roll, just so there's clarity of who voted and who did not vote. Okay, so once we get to that, so we have a purchase order request here for, purchase order number 2023-2222 for capital improvement project for an all-inclusive playground to be located at the Civic Center, for funds to come from our Splotch and also from our tourism product development. So do we have a motion to approve this purchase order?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Yes, a second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the Board? Hearing none. At this time, we will ask the clerk to call the roll for the vote.
Chairman Whitaker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hart?
Yes.
Major?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. All three Board members eligible to vote have voted in favor of this, so this purchase order has been approved. Okay, this time we have the approval of the Georgia Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Subground Award. The first one is for the Adult Felony Drug Court Subgrant J-24-8-32. This does cover our entire Lookout Mountain Judicial Circuit. This first one here is for the Adult Felony Court. This is part of their annual grant funding. The reason this is on our agenda is Walker County is the physical agent for this grant. This has been in place, now I guess this is probably the fifth year, I think, Mitch Gresson?
Starting our sixth.
Starting our sixth year. Okay, great. So this starts the sixth year. It's phenomenal what this program's doing. They just recently had a graduation, what, less than two weeks ago that I was able to attend, and I don't think there was a dry eye in the room. It was a very touching moment, and so this is just a phenomenal program. So again, this is just our annual procedure. We've done this the last five years. This will be year number six. Mitch Gresson, Neil does a great job with her team, working with the Judicial Circuit. There's a lot of people behind the scenes that make us all this happen, but with us being the physical agent, we do have this in our record from our auditing standpoint, and also for submitting of this, we have to approve this and put this on our agenda. So is there any questions or concern? There's some of the staff members here tonight. If you have any questions, is there any questions at this time on this grant?
Just want to say I think you guys do a wonderful job.
Mm-hmm.
You've saved a lot of lives, changed a lot of lives, and you've just done very well.
Yeah, good point. Anyone else?
I just mirror those remarks. It's one of those things, in the sense it's been in places, done nothing but, except grow and prosper and help us, helping people that need the help. So we appreciate that.
Very good. Okay, at this time, we have a motion to approve subgrant J-24-8-032.
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion to approve is granted. Okay, this one's kind of the first cousin to this one. This is another grant that funds the Mental Health Court, very same similar program, but this is handled by another judge in our circuit. All still is handled here through the county and managing the finances and the documentation of all this. So do we have a motion to approve subgrant J-24-8-73?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. This subgrant is also approved. Okay, the next item we have here, this is also another thing that we do, I think most every year they send this over to us. This is a memorandum of understanding, the Family Crisis Center of Walker, Dade, Catoosa, and Chautauqua Counties, a nonprofit tax-exempt organization under the laws of the State of Georgia and the rules and regulations of the Internal Revenue Code. Hereafter, Family Crisis Center and, and this is a list of all the partners that the Family Crisis Center works with, Walker County Sheriff's Department, Catoosa County Sheriff's Department, Dade County Sheriff's Department, Chautauqua County Sheriff's Department, City of Fort Oathor Police Department, City of Ringo Police Department, City of Rossville Police Department, City of Chickamauga Police Department, Walker County DFACs, Catoosa County DFACs, Chautauqua County DFACs, Dade County DFACs, Lookout Mountain Judicial Superior Court, Sexual Assault Victims Affirmative Center, Four Points Inc., Bridge Health, Georgia Legal Services, how do we say that one, Amish House? Sorry, I don't know how to pronounce that. Okay, gets on there. Walker County Board of Commissioners, Dade County Board of Commissioners, Catoosa County Board of Commissioners, Chautauqua County Commissioner. Hereafter referred to as partners, whereas the Family Crisis Center and partners all provide service to victims of domestic violence, both adults and children, whereas the Family Crisis Centers and the partners all seek to provide services to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of the victims served, whereas the Family Crisis Centers and partners all believe that all victims involved in domestic violence should have a safe and secure location to rebuild their lives, whereas the Family Crisis Center and partners are committed to collaborate together to ensure domestic violence victims receive any and all needed services they enter into this agreement. The memorandum of understanding shall be effective from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024. The Family Crisis Centers agrees to the following: to provide a 24-hour crisis hotline; two, to provide all services free of discrimination on the basis of political affirmation, religions, race, sex, ethnicity, gender, handicap, or age; to serve as a liaison to victims, participants of the Family Violence Intervention Program; four, provide emergency shelter for victims of domestic violence; five, assist in completion of temporary protective orders, TPOs in court accomplishments; six, provide victim of domestic violence appropriate referrals based on needs; seven, provide domestic violence support groups for victims of domestic violence; eight, provide financial assistance as funding allows to victims of domestic violence; nine, provide follow-up services and support; ten, provide community education; eleven, confidentiality for all clients served through the Family Crisis Center; twelve, provide safety planning for residential and non-residential victims of domestic violence; thirteen, to work in cooperation with each signing partner and memorandum of understanding and carrying out the duties of this agency. The partners agree to the following: to make appropriate referrals to the Family Crisis Center as needed; to cooperate with the Family Crisis Center and staff and volunteers in the performance of their duties; three, to partnering, partner participants with Family Crisis Center shall maintain all information regarding domestic violence program cases confidential as required by all state and federal laws, rules, and regulations. And this will be decided by our organization here as a county government, and then each one of these other partners also have received memorandums of understanding as well. And again, this is an ongoing support for an organization that's been our community for a long, long time, and has helped a lot of people. Any additional comments to this?
Yes, sir.
All right, hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve this memorandum of understanding with the Family Crisis Center?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Memorandum is approved. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our Commissioner comments, so we'll start out with Commissioner Askew tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Oh, I am so sorry. I am so sorry. I missed one. I sure did.
Additional information?
Yes, I'm so sorry for that. Yep, I just went right over there. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, my mistake. I had it on my list here, and I just went right past it. So we do have another purchase order, purchase order number 2023-2161. This is for equipment and installation on some vehicles for the Sheriff's Department. This is with Southern Emergency Products LLC. This is to the Walker County Sheriff's Office, and this come over from Captain Anderson, who is over the road patrol. There's just a list of everything from the blue lights, the white lights, the strobe lights, mounting kit hardwares, and all of the things, once they, you know, buy a patrol car, everything that they have to load in with it to make the vehicle ready for emergency calls from the radios and all the different things that go into this. And so there's several vehicles that were under the Splotch program and that they are getting the equipment for. So this purchase order request is for $32,945.50, and this would be coming out of the Sheriff's Department's approved allocation from their Splotch funds. So they have the Splotch funds available for this purchase order, $32,945.50 to Southern Emergency Products. Any question or discussion with the Board of this?
No, sir.
All right, do we have a motion to approve this purchase order?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion to approve the purchase order. All right, thank you for that. Sorry I missed that. Okay, now we're at Commissioner comments.
All right. Now, I just wanted a couple of things real quick. Thanks to everybody who helped make the Chickamauga Down Home Days a huge success. They really had a great turnout, great, great night, great, great events, a lot of hard work. Thanks to everybody that did that. The Gordon Lee FFA is sponsoring, and I don't know if you've seen that yet, Ms. Hardinup, the Hereford's in the Cove. It's a, it's going to be a cattleman's event that need to be registered by July the 29th. You need to get with the Gordon Lee FFA there. Dalton Green is a contact. So if you want to, if you're interested in that, try to get with them by the July the 29th is the deadline on getting registered. It's going to be a pretty big event. And lastly, I would like to say that in this time with this extreme heat that we've been experiencing, not only are we all suffering in it, but we've got folks that are shut in, that are by themselves, elderly, or things like that. Let's be sure and keep an eye out for our neighbors, and if we feel like that we need to be checking on people, let's check on each other, because this extreme heat's causing problems across the country, and I don't see it letting up anytime for a little ways soon. So it's like for everybody to be mindful of your animals and your neighbors and the community. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. I'd like to give a shout out to the Chamber of Commerce. Jennifer's been there for, I think it's October, I believe, but she's done a great job. But next week, as Mark always points out, the leading industry in Walker County is agriculture. So next week, Jennifer's hosting Tyler Harper. He's the new Georgia Agriculture Commissioner. Now, I'm on the Farm Bureau board. We've been trying to get him to come talk to the Farm Bureau for a year and can't get him, but she got him there. So I encourage you to get out and see that. That's going to be great. Shout out for that. Also, Joe LaGeese sent us a community update email last week, if y'all, if people saw that. But one thing just jumped out at me, and I guess credit goes to the Chairman and to Greg and to all the folks in the County Department and also county employees also about our latest credit rating in the county. I think six years ago, we were like at the bottom of the barrel. Now we're now a double A3, I believe. So if you don't understand what that means, that means we were awful. Now we're rated as high quality on our credit rating. So big shout out to the Chairman, but also everybody that worked with that, because I know there are people in the county that worked with a lot less for those six years to try to get to that. So a group effort by all the county employees that did that. So just very good thing there. And last thing I want to point out, Karen Bradley, who usually comes to our meetings, she's not here tonight. If you're involved with ag at all in the county, you've dealt with Karen with the NRCS office. She's retiring next week. She's worked with farmers in the county for over 30 years, and she's hanging it up. Her party is next Friday at the Hallowing Authority Building.
Good for her. She's earned retirement. She's done a wonderful job. Very nice lady. So appreciate everyone coming out tonight. Just want to say thank you to all of our county employees. Appreciate the hard work that you do, especially in this heat. Just most grateful to all of our departments, and you folks do a wonderful job. Also, a shout out to Randy Pittman. Randy, thank you so much for all you're doing for the Historical Preservation Board. You guys do a wonderful job. And I would encourage citizens to come to that board meeting, learn the history of Walker County. It's absolutely fascinating. We have so much history in our county, and it's a really good time to come and listen and kind of expand your knowledge on our history. So thank you very much. Ms. Chairman?
I would like to echo something there that Brian said about our credit rating from the standpoint that it definitely has been a team effort over the last six and a half years. We have had a lot of people that, and within our departments, that have done without a lot of things, made things work, and worked on old equipment and patched things up to try to help stay within budgets and to get where we're getting ourselves in a stronger financial position from where we were from the past. And so it was very exciting when the bond, the bond, well, not the, the rating agencies, Trump say, Moody's reached out to us a few weeks ago and said, hey, we're going to have to re-rate y'all as a county, and kind of surprised us, because we were not asking for that. We don't have any intentions of doing any more bonds or anything of that nature, but they said, your financial position has changed so significantly that we're going to have to re-rate you. And I was like, okay, well, I thought we were doing good. And they said, no, you've had a significant improvement, so we're going to re-rate the county. So again, total team effort from all of our elected officials, staff members, and also you as citizen and taxpayers, and being patient and understanding, as we've not been able to fix everything fast enough. We haven't been able to pave every road and fix everything that, you know, we would have liked to have been able to do, but we've been able to work as a team and to manage a budget and live within, stay within that budget, and that takes everybody working together to make that happen. So thank you to everyone for being a part of that. Also, too, it's very exciting about these outdoor recreation projects that we're doing, especially for our children to have a safe place to play, for an all-inclusive. This is something that has been on our scope of work for some time. I would say probably back into early 2019, we've had that vision as a county and have had volunteers and people come forward saying, hey, what can we do to be a part of this solution? And there's actually even been funds that have been raised, and there's more funds being raised to help us with another grant that we are applying for. And one of the things that you get extra points for in that grant is to have local community support. is to have local community support and have local community financial support. So, what we're hoping to be able to do is to get a grant and also local contributions. So, we have a Phase Two of the all-inclusive playground at the Walker County Civic Center to be able to expand that. So, that grant process is a little over a year. It's gonna take some time to go through those hurdles. But, uh, there's people that are, that are working on that. And we are very excited to be able to expand that to make our Civic Center campus more of a destination. Uh, we have a large campus there. It offers a lot. Uh, it's a great vision back many years ago by Commissioner Roy Parrish to build that facility uh, and to have the, the pavilion, the walking track, and the Civic Center. It is all highly utilized. And there's a great walking track there, but it is, um, it's, it's done, it's not a solid surface walking track. And so, that's part of what we want to be able to try to accomplish with a Phase Two or Phase Three of that project is to get that walking track as well as a solid surface track. Because the topography that we have there, anytime we get a rain, we get washouts and we're constantly having to maintain that walking path. And so, we want to be able to upgrade that and truly make that, being in the center of our county, a destination for families to go and, uh, have family fun and visit and allow their kids to play and also have things there for adults to do. Also, you know, we're even looking at, there's room there to maybe even do some pickleball courts, things of that nature. Uh, so, it's kind of, kind of the sky's the limit there of what we can do maybe in the years to come. But we're always looking for those opportunities to improve. So, these two projects here are just the start of many things recreational that we hope to be able to do over the next several years. So, very excited about that, very appreciative of the board's support to move these things forward. And also to you, the citizens as well, for approving this in our Splotch referendum to make recreational part of our Splotch projects, uh, to move an all-inclusive playground forward. So, thank you for that. So, at this time, I don't think we have any need for an executive session. Okay, we don't. Alright, so, no executive session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir, motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you all for being here tonight. It's been a great meeting.